... permanent city manager to the city council for selection of a permanent city manager, to weigh the city policy related to solicitation of calls or proposals related to the search firm contract, and to select and authorize a committee consisting of Manny Soco, Willie Madrid, and Mary Garcia to repeat the selection process for selection of the executive search firm.
We have a motion on the floor by Jessica Gander, seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
I have some questions. Can I ask other questions? You, who, this group will make the decisions as to how much this new manager is going to be making. First, what are you trying to do is get the, I guess, I lost the word there. People that are going to search for it, is it going to be local or is it going to be restricted or?
We're contacting, we will be contacting firms that do this across the state and firms that do this across the nation so that we can identify firms, identify their process, identify the cost, potential cost, identify the duration that this will take, right? And then, then in that process, they'll come for you and you will assist them in building the profile of what you want in the city manager. What attributes, skills, what abilities, those kinds of things. They also may have a number of community meetings so that from the public, they can take input as to what the public would like to see in a city manager. For example, being bilingual would be one of the attributes that they want in the city manager, right? And after that, they'll build a brochure and go through an application process for you in consultation with the team that just been selected. And they'll bring forward, in consultation with the team, two, three finalists for the whole council to interview.
Okay. This council will have the authority to assess the monetary figures, the benefits, everything that's wanted to.
Of course.
The practice for each person.
That'll all come out of the process because they'll have to put that in the brochure. Some number for compensation or some number plus negotiation, you know, something like that.
Your city charter actually requires four votes to approve the employment of a permanent city manager, so that would require the votes of four members of the city council.
Do you need the city charter amendment to, do the mayor pro tempore get to vote?
Under the current situation, since it's not an ordinance, if there's not an exception, I don't think so, but I want to look at it before we make an absolute ruling on that. But I don't think there's a special exception that permit the mayor pro tempore vote under the circumstances. Or would permit the mayor to vote since the mayor pro tempore is in the same position as the city.
Start to finish, any to 100 days.
If you're looking at that situation, giving your special election for mayor, then you should have a mayor in place by that time which would eliminate the issue.
Mrs. Reyes to vote?
Yes.
Yes, Jessica Gander?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
I request this amendment to adopt a specific policy regarding overtime compensation as well as employees. This policy is implemented by the State Department in private plans.
Mayor, the counsel or attorney that working on this matters all, that the attorney had discussed the matter.
We have drafted a policy at consultation with some other law enforcement agencies that would, would leave address the situation raised by the governing agency in connection with some of the city's grants. The bottom line is that some of the grants that are designed to enhance services do indeed provide for payment of overtime within the grant for some of your supervisory employees, employees who you normally would not pay overtime for. However, in order for the grant to actually pay those individuals, there's a requirement that you have a policy in place. Initially, Lieutenant Alvarez was nice enough to put us in contact with Corpus Christi and Suzy Wallace down there, just not to belate it, but at any rate, they had adopted a policy which has limited the itself to this particular grant. And ultimately, it was a determination by the government federal agency that that wasn't sufficient, that there had to be a general policy. We utilized some information that had been supplied to us and drafted a general policy that provides for you to authorize the payment of overtime to any supervisory employee that is working under a grant if the grant authorizes the payment of overtime. What we had hoped to do is to get this policy through the agency that is to approve this to make sure that we don't have to do it again, make sure that they're okay with the actual policy language and the policy that we're looking at. Unfortunately, although we said it earlier this week, we, I think Lieutenant Alvarez told me a little bit earlier, we haven't gotten response. So you certainly are received with it. I would want to make sure that the agency clears it before you process any payments under it to make sure that they don't come back and try to demand something and audit some time subsequently. But that's the only thing that we haven't been able to get done in connection with the policy.
Yes, I have a motion to table it. Will you give that decision or that information that we need in order to make some decision whether we're going to comply or not?
Can we approve it pending the approval of the state agency? Was there another thing that depended, was the approval of the agency?
There were two things. There was the issue as to whether or not it would apply to any pending payments in connection with the grant. And they wouldn't even put that in there. And then the only other issue would be whether or not the agency would sign off on our policy itself. And those are the only two things.
So approval pending the agency authorizing or further authorizing to make sure and to withhold payments until that authorization.
Yes, and the provision that it would apply to any existing overtime claims that were made in connection with any existing grants.
Mayor?
So this only applies to?
If this plan does go through, will it be effective the day that it is approved and it complies? Because my understanding is that we can't go back if there's no policy in force at that time. It would be at the time this policy is approved, is that correct?
You couldn't go back and make back payments. You can go back and make, pay claims that are pending with respect to it, but you couldn't, for example, go back and, and for people who, where those claims have already been settled, you couldn't go back that far and do that. But for example, if you got situations where the city has already paid payrolls and there's no claim was made for those benefits and that type thing in connection with it, you couldn't go back and pay those.
Do we have any pending at this time?
I have no idea.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a number?
Two.
And who would be?
In the police department.
And what are we looking at, how many hours are ordered to the building now?
Well, it's capped by the grant itself, which is about $45,000.
For what?
For any, any and all supervisory management police officers.
Okay. What does that 45 cover?
It covers overtime for our management staff.
For how long?
For the duration of the grant.
Okay, and what is the duration of the grant? For the first of the year?
Three years.
Three years? So they have their time to use for three years. And that's a total amount?
Yes, ma'am.
Mary?
I, you asked me a question because this, what I've been asking is, this grant only applies to, no question.
Presently, it's the only grant, but our policy would, the policy you're considering would cover it in all areas.
Okay, and the reason I wanted to make sure that it only applies to these departments is because, in my opinion, there's a great disparity in schedule increases for the employees involved. And what I'm referring to, since we came into council, there's as much as over 100% increase in salaries to different people in the supervisory field. Taking this route where law enforcement gets even more of empowerment due to this stone guard policy, it increases that, that leverage for the difference. Some people are being every time and some people are getting up ahead of pay schedule. I'd like to see everybody have an increase where it's relevant to percentage and not based on just an amount. Year devices, which is when you do a budgeting. It seems to me, if you look at the schedule, like I said, there's people that have gotten an increase of 5%. The people that got as much as 112%. So there's a great disparity in that. And given putting the policy of stone guard even increases that disparity, my recommendation is to wait till everybody catches up percentage wise and then we can go ahead and implement this policy. Because right now, it's just, this trend is getting further and further away with the people that are at the bottom of the voting pool. And I see it that it should be equitable as far as percentages go. Obviously, they're not going to catch up with the people in private. But at least when there is an increase, everybody will say 50, 10, 25%. But right now, that disparity is just.
I understand that on that stone guard, that you have a choice to sign up for that overtime. It's up to that person if he wants it, he can work it, they're not forced to. It just gives them that opportunity whether they want to get compensated additionally, but they're not forced to do it. So everybody has a choice. My understanding, how many people can qualify for this particular one? How many salary everyone can ask?
Well, there are two types of overtime in that grant. There is overtime for the ranking file police officer and, which is the largest amount. And then there is overtime for supervisory staff, which would be four people.
Okay. So except for four people, do they want to take it or not?
Well.
Do they not, they can't sign up on that, aren't there increments?
Here's always been my counsel with the police department. Two things. The officers and their executive officers, they know their police work. And I'm not going to sit here and say to you, I know that police work. My expertise is the management area, right? Now, I counsel them in two ways. One, their schedules, that everybody is on a rotational schedule over a given period of time, so all of them are working each shift, right? And the second thing is relative to overtime, right? That overtime shouldn't only be provided to a select few. Everybody should take their turn at doing overtime. Because when they hire at the city, that's one of the key questions that the police officers are asked, right? That you're going to be working overtime, you know, are you comfortable with that? That is a question that every police officer is asked. So from a management construct, all of them should be working overtime and it's more beneficial to the city because if you work the same people over and over again in overtime, those individuals are going to tire, right? And that should, this should be spread across all police officers so they all take their share of the duty that requires whether the grant source or whether it's regular city money.
But when they signed on as a supervisor salary employee, they knew that they were not going to get the overtime. That's your compensation.
Well.
They do have that option of getting additional money by signing that.
Our general policy has been, the management people, they work the hours, they need to work. Now, with the special grant funding, it provides for that opportunity for actually paying them.
And it's not costing the city anything because it's from a grant?
No, it isn't.
Well, I just wanted to convey that, to me, it's not an issue about how much employees are making, especially, because my personal reference is I don't compare a police officer who gets a call that has to run into a house where there may be somebody who has multiple warrants, is going to go to jail for a long time, they attach them with firearms, to a department head who sits in an office for hours in day and air condition. I just, I don't compare those two positions. One, there's a biting attribute to it where even if they pull over a vehicle, there's the possibility of somebody pulling a gun on them on a daily basis. Two, again, different position where, where best is not even a concern or not a possibility. So I don't see this as who's making more than who. On the second thing, we're not talking about employee salaries here. This is not an item talking about raising the courts or raising the city clerk's office to a higher salary. This is strictly just about the grants. And when we're putting, when we're going to give our employees the opportunity to participate in this grant, especially supervisors, and this is a very popular grant, which means, you know, at any time, you could have seven to eight additional officers out of the streets because of this grant. And if you have one supervisor for, let's say, eight officers are on shift and you add additional seven to eight officers, well then you have liability issues, you have security issues because you have one supervisor for 16 officers. That's where I like this opportunity to allow supervisors to also be out on the streets because then those additional officers have a supervisor that they can go to and are not taking up the time of the one supervisor who's already got his hassle with a full staff. So I see the benefit in adding another supervisor to the rotation, especially with a grant this popular, this would have been on these departments. And from what I understand, it's highly utilized. It's not something that we're struggling to find people back to the opposite. They have to sign up because of the demand is so high and it's first come, first served basis unless of that, that high demand of people wanting to utilize this. So again, I don't see this as about trying to compare salaries, but that's not the agenda of this conference, about a grant. Not just that, it's paired into all the departments. So if Public Works gets a grant, you know, for streets, they can utilize that. You know, we utilize it in the safe routes for school, you know, where it allows an administration to. So there's different grants out there, it'll allow our supervisors to participate in it across the board, although security is a big concern here on the border. And so we see a lot more police grants than we do the other departments, just strictly because law enforcement is, has always been a high priority, so you're federal law enforcement sees grants a lot more often. And I'm also going to say that anytime you put more officers, especially supervisors who have that experience when you're dealing with younger officers. In our community, which is adjacent to Mexico, that's one of my biggest concerns. I'm very proud of how much we hire officers and the fact that we get into these grants because it means that when the city of Oaxaca puts pressure, when they do the roundups of the Aztecas in the city of Oaxaca, and it pushes those leaders into the outlying communities, where they hit a core, we put our own pressure and they have to continue beyond. They have to go to the cliff in favor of some more of their own. So I see a huge benefit to anytime you put more officers, especially experienced officers, who say, that's a known Azteca, don't let a leak service that vehicle to a rookie officer. There's benefits to it, so. And if there was a second motion, is that allowed?
There was just a motion on the floor. First motion was to table it.
And among that, I actually have a motion.
Yes, until Mr. Gander addressed what I was going to say, I wanted to reiterate is that this is going to be applied to all of the departments. So the fact that maybe the police department really only was taking advantage of it, that's now, that this policy is to go get any from all of the departments. So as he said, it is a bit at some point.
Well, not only a grant, and that's yes or no. You know, right now, police departments take advantage. I'd like to say that they obviously are well worth it. I have no problem with that. The only question I have is the disparity in the other departments. You have disparities, like I said, since we came into council. Some council, some departments, like I said, are a 5% increase. 112.62% increase. That's quite a difference. 5.08%. And this is just the supervisory. I'm not talking about the actual grant of, the council about supervisory. There is a great disparity. I'd like to see that disparity showing and then look at too many stone guarding policies. I am a part of that, the police deserve it. But so do the other departments. And we're not looking at the other departments. And that's, that's my concern.
I don't know that each department has tried getting a grant. I don't know that. But perhaps now is the time if they hadn't before, then of course, now is the time. It's not always going to be fair across board. You know, you can't always be fair with everybody all at the same time. I think we've tried to show them that progressively, we've tried to elevate the balance, but we can't do it all at once. You know, I believe that that's our aim, and we're trying to do the best we can. But at this point, I think that if the departments want to search for grants, they, we have a grant by direct, I believe this, a lot of people would be happy to do that for them if, if it was asked. And, you know, they have the opportunity to. Just be a matter of search.
I understand, I understand. My point is that disparity is too large to make enough, meaning with grants for work.
It takes time, you can't, you can't bring paper that will blow off.
No, I don't have, I just like to see this, I'm not trying to say, you know, in a way that the people that are behind have a chance to catch up.
I think if we table this, I think we can go to some, some different kind of understanding because we have three or four different situations here right now. We're waiting for an answer from legal counsel. We have issues about the disparity on salaries as to, I don't feel that we need to go retro back on him, even if he was into effect, needs to be effective, that means that it does go in. So I'm asking a motion that the table decision.
Again, I'm going to go back to what this council has always made it very clear that every year, we would address one department. And we stuck to that. The first year this council came in, the budget session, the police department's pay scales were, were addressed. This second year this council went into the court department, pay scales were addressed. And for those of you who don't know that, the court department is not the highest paid in passing county. We pay better than sheriffs, we pay better than the district courts. And the thought behind that was that we can then hold these departments to a higher level of expectation. If we pay the best, we can recruit the best, and the people that don't live up to that standard, we can, we can hold them to that accountability. And two years ago, it was the opposite. We looked for a pulse because we paid the lowest in West Texas. So we, we, we've done what we said, which is every year, we've addressed the departments. Next year, as, which was the agreement when we all looked at budget, we would address a different department. So the fact that there's disparity is not a, is not a secret or it's not a, we said we can't, we can't make everybody the best paid here in passing county at once, but we can do it over time and we can stay competitive over time. And literally every department, the reason you mentioned doubling salaries is because we paid the lowest in West Texas for years. And so of course, you're going to have that type of difference and jump when you're going from being in last place to being in leads. You're going to have that type of disparity jump. But again, this is not about how much people are making the salary, this is about grants. This is about are we going to allow supervisors to assist in grants? And especially in this, this stone guarding grant that we're talking about, that puts supervisors in charge of ranking file employees, which are normally, you know, very young, very young officers. And so, you know, I would like to see that we approve contingent on the legal council's recommendations are met. No, the motion.
We had a motion on the floor first.
But there was no second, so it's nice.
Okay, we don't have time. But second, we have a motion on the floor to approve a contingent legal council's request.
Recommendations.
Recommendations by Jessica Gander? Seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
No.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
No.
Jessica Gander?
Yes.
Claudia Rodriguez?
When?
Is all this legal?
Is it legal? Yes.
You know, it's a policy decision, but as far as it being legal, yes, it's legal. I mean, the issue is the policy decision by grant, but it's totally legal and certainly would be legal if the grant, if the director approves it. And that's one of the continues.
I don't know, but 12 is approved? Ladies and gentlemen, do we have anything for executive session?
A motion to the lead. I have a number 15.
We have a motion to the lead, add a number 15, by Jessica Gander, seconded by Mary Garcia. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Jessica Gander?
Yes.
Add a number 15 is deleted.
What should we do there?
We have a motion to adjourn by Mary Garcia, seconded by Maria Reyes. Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia? Maria Reyes? Jessica Gander?
Yes.
To adjourn at 6:58.